How do you get into playoffs?
Little more than Mr. Bradshaw, you have to buy your way in.
All right.
Seven o'clock, actually.
It's time to go at seven o'clock.
Grab it up and out.
Okay.
Covid man?
I'm gonna call the Loudoun County Commission meeting for Monday, November 2nd, 2020 to order. And we are six o'clock on the notes. Jim Jankins, step to the podium and tell us about the zoning resolutions.
First item is a resolution amending the zoning map of Loudoun County, Tennessee pursuant to Chapter 7, 13-7-105 as Tennessee code annotated to rezone from R1 Suburban Residential District to C2 General Commercial District, Loudoun County Tax Map 015, parcel 145, and the remaining portion of 146 located at 707, 77, Highway 11 East, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in the 2nd Legislative District.
Okay, number two.
A resolution amending the zoning map of Loudoun County, Tennessee pursuant to Chapter 7, 13-7-105 as Tennessee code annotated to rezone approximately 3.8 acres from A2 Rural Residential District to C2 General Commercial District, Loudoun County Tax Map 027, a portion of parcel 138.00 situated in the 3rd Legislative District.
Number three.
A resolution to amend Loudoun County's zoning resolution, Article 4, Section 4.08 to a minimum size pursuant to Tennessee code annotated, Section 13-7-105.
Okay, and number four.
It's a resolution adopted by the Loudoun County Commission, closing a rideaway near the intersection of Highway 70 and Highway 321.
Thank you, Jim. Has anybody from the public wished to speak for or against these four resolutions? Step to the podium, state your name, and tell us your concern. Don't all rush at the same time. Okay, Jim, right after we open the meeting and the public comments, we'll do the four of them. And I guess we'll just do them by number, or A, B, C, and D. You won't have to reread them. Okay, I've asked Commissioner Shaver to open the meeting.
Do you want to pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It would be my night to do the invocation. I've invited my new pastor from Up First Baptist Church, John Hunn. If he'd come down and do it, he's really about people and wanting to meet people. And I said, "I can take you to a place where you can meet if you..." So he agreed to come down. So I'm gonna ask him if he'll do our invocation, if he wants to say anything.
It's a privilege to be a member of Loudoun County. And I, my wife and I are very glad. We want to do anything we can to make this a better place. So it's an honor to be here. If you would just bow your head, please. Father, I do thank you that I am an American. I thank you for my country. I thank you for the leadership of our country. Thank you for the military. Thank you for the people of this country. I am a "we the people" citizen. And that's Representative Will here tonight. Thank you for the men and the women that are on the commission that have put their gifts in service, that they have been chosen, have been elected. I thank you for the wisdom that you will give them. Pray that you would help us all use our minds, use our ears, and use our mouths wisely. And I just thank you for what can be accomplished, what will be accomplished, what can be accomplished in this county. Pray that this meeting will be all that you want it to be. May you be pleased with the conversation. Take us to wherever you want us to be as a county lord in the future, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
I meant to mention also, he did move into the best district in the county, by the way.
Don't tell him that.
He must have gotten lost.
Okay, Kevin, call the roll.
Rooster, here. Mears.
Here.
Hurley.
Here.
Tinker.
Here.
Sutterfield.
Here.
Whitfield.
Here.
Cullen.
Here.
Doug.
Here.
Shaver.
Here.
Waller.
Here.
All right, next up is the adoption of November 2nd, 2020 Loudoun County Commission Agenda.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as it's printed.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the agenda as printed.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to put forth a motion also for the agenda tonight to see if we could request our county attorney to write a letter and see if there's a possibility. And I appreciate what the landfill commission has done. I really do. But I would like to have a dialogue with Republic. And I think there are a lot of people up here that would like to do that, just to give us a comfort zone. And I would like to put that in the form of a motion, see if it might be allowable. I know that it has been a situation, that it's been with the Department of Justice. But it's like buying a car. If you're going to be able to talk to, I'd like to find out more information about them and what their plans are.
What are you asking for right this minute?
If we can just simply sit down with a representative...
What do you want to do about the agenda?
I'd just like to add that to the agenda to see if it could be voted on tonight, or see if the mayor could do that and bring it back to us at the workshop.
I think that's something Buddy could do. Bob's getting a replacement part for his shoulders.
We've been all over North America since, and he's also, his shoulder he had reconstructed from his elbow. So he's playing catch-up.
Just a while.
Buddy, would you carry that to Bob when he's back on his feet?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we got a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as written. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is adopted. Next up is the reading and acceptance of the October 5th, 2020 Loudoun County Commission Meeting Minutes.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second on the motion.
Second on the motion. Any comments? Okay, all in favor of adopting the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next up is general public comments. Rich Anken. Now remember, solid waste is not on the agenda, so...
And, Richard, I do want to tell you that...
Sorry?
I do want to say that the document that we got from Steve Fields did not arrive to anybody on this commission until they got here today. So Steve sent this document out this morning. And so no one has had a chance to even look at any of this information yet, too. So, and I asked that it please be removed from the agenda because I don't feel like that we have enough information right now to make a good, accurate decision. And we are waiting on a couple of questions from Bob Bowman to be answered.
Kelly, I appreciate that. Both Kelly and Ben, Chairman. Colin have informed me that it wouldn't be on the agenda tonight. I was gonna say a few choice things, but I'll hold it. Mr. Duff, this is the shortest speech you'll ever hear me make. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat Hunter.
Ditto would be good, Pat. Ditto.
Wishful thinking.
Yeah.
My name is Pat Hunter. And I actually was not going to speak tonight because it wasn't on the agenda. But one thing that I would like to make a request is that if we're going to show the tonnage, that we have complete information. And that we start at the very beginning, at 2007, because the numbers that I gave regarding the overage of the tonnage are not included in these years. So I think that if we're going to talk about the tonnage, that it also reflect the correct number base because they calculate differently. By 270 days, 273 days, that's TDEC, what they operate by. And what Santec signs off on, by the way. And then 365. And the landfill is not open, 365 days. So...
Pat, can you tell me, where do you get your numbers from? Are you getting those off the TXI? Are you getting those off...
I am painstakingly going through all my packets.
From solid waste numbers is what you're getting at?
From solid waste.
Okay, I was just curious.
An actual documentation from the engineer to TDEC where he signed off and they acknowledged the numbers, so...
Is there not an easier way to get it?
Yes, from Santec.
But they won't give it to you?
Well, we give it to us every week. They give us quarterly reports. And, and by the way, we do get information from Santec and the engineers from TDEC to acknowledge the tonnage and also the airspace that's left. But conveniently, this year's information is missing from the packet. And when I go back and look at the packets that are online, they are not included in those packets. So they're pulled. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Pat. Okay, anybody else?
Nope.
That concludes the public comments.
No, no. So you've gotta go.
Can I just say a few words?
Real few, real few.
Real quick, the information I provided was not to be, not necessarily to be discussed. I provided it just so you could have it and we could discuss it later. Pat Hunter at the last meeting provided a lot of numbers that, in my opinion, are not correct. And what I provided was the quarterly reports that we did from Santec, outlining how much tonnage we get on an annual basis. I use 365 days, basically, in the lead year, because that's how we calculate the 800 tons per day average that's the ceiling. Now clearly, Santec has delivered over 800 tons per day to the landfill for a very short period of time, a number of years ago. Pat has some different numbers. I'm not sure where she got them. But again, these numbers that I have provided you, what Santec provides us, it's also what Santec uses to provide the information to TDEC when they make their quarterly payments. I don't believe the numbers that Pat has are correct. However, if they are correct, there's a lot of malfeasance and skulduggery going on. Again, I don't believe those numbers that Pat's using. I believe the numbers that we have are correct. And if Santec were falsifying the numbers, they would not only be presenting a civil case against them, but in my opinion, it would be a criminal case. And what I would suggest Pat does is visit with the district attorney because if her numbers are correct, there's a lot of malfeasance going on. Again, I don't believe her numbers. I believe that what Santec is providing us is correct. Again, I just wanted to give you folks the information I had. And we can talk about it later. Again, I just, Pat's numbers, in my opinion, are not correct.
You've got a meeting next Tuesday, right?
Yes.
Where'd you get yours from?
I'm sure you'll reveal it.
And the packet from...
Thank you.
That we get from Santec everywhere.
The packet from Santec?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
My public comment is, we've heard so much about all this stuff from all points, all different directions. This is a solid waste decision. I told Mr. Fields and the solid waste the night they had all this down, and what a huge mistake it was to get 30 more people involved in the decision-making process. They've got a potential contract extension that gives us some really good stuff. It gives the county some wonderful protections that we have never in 20 years had. I would like to say to Mr. Jamerson and Mr. Brewster, Mr. Field, if y'all are meeting Tuesday, vote on you, on your, vote on it. Up it, down it, let's be done. Dragging this thing from the North City Loudoun to down here, back and forth, you're never gonna go anywhere. Republic's gonna take over at some point, and we're dead in the water on that one anyhow. Just vote at your next meeting. Just vote on it. Either vote it up or vote it down. If you've got the votes for it, do the contract extension. I personally support it. I'm not speaking for anybody else, don't anybody else, but this is your all's job, not ours. I know you want input from the stakeholders. You see what you got. You got a mess now. After months and months and months of working on this contract, now you got a bigger mess than you ever had. Next Tuesday night, vote it. Be done. Up or down, be done.
That's kinda out of character, though. If it was Ed Qualls from the other agency, you'd be Sherlock Holmes if it was EDA.
I don't know what that means, but we've heard all this when he beat her.
I mean, it means if it was Jack Qualls, you would, it would be like a dog with a bone. You wouldn't let it go.
Let what go?
Anything.
Any kind of question about anything. The only thing I...
I don't have any questions.
The only thing I disagree, as that goes, is overall, whether we're on a commission or not, the county commission is supposed to oversee the well-being of everybody in the county. Everybody. Doesn't matter if there's a commission, or a committee, or whatever. We are still ultimately responsible. And if we have a commission that is not doing their due diligence and working for the, for the best interest of the people of the county regardless, I think it's our, it's up to us to make sure that they, that it is operating right. Whether, even though we don't get a vote in it, we do appoint those people to those committees. And they are appointed to represent and act in the best interest of Loudoun County, not a corporate entity.
I agree with you 100%.
You do get a vote.
And I think they've done that. I'm, I'm to the point, I believe they have done their due diligence. They're at those meetings for three and four hours a night. They've been on this thing for months and months.
Five years.
I'm five years. I'm convinced they've done it. EDA, on the other hand, no, sir. I don't think they have. I'll put that right back on it.
But like I said, you do get a vote because that is why I am on that committee.
That's right, I agree.
And appointed to that committee, so...
Here's the issue.
That's why I asked for it to be postponed.
There's a lot of questions that Bob Bowman has. But I'm not calling him when he's still under anesthesia for getting a shoulder fixed. Give him time. That's why it was postponed. I'm sure Steve and the Solid Waste Commission will look at the numbers and determine which one's right.
But you're correct. I mean, just like the EDA, this is the same one. It doesn't matter whether I like it or you like it. When they meet, they can vote and do whatever they want because the state of Tennessee has given the authority to do it. So they can sign, negotiate. They can sit here and say, "We don't like it. That's a bad deal. Don't do it." And it don't make a bit of difference. And that's the thing about being on a commission that really bothers me, is when you know that something needs to be rectified and you can't do a darn thing about it.
I don't...
It's called inter-local agreement.
Written long before we got here.
Moving right along.
Doing right along.
I'll let Bob decide it. He'll get back to us. Jim Jankins, step to the podium. We'll do Resolution Number A. The two commissioners from District 2, do you have a concern?
No.
No.
Okay.
We'll do something then.
We'll make a motion to approve Resolution A.
Okay, you got a motion to approve and a second. Commissioner Tinker made the motion. Commissioner Hurley seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution B. Coach, it's the 3rd district.
Know where it's at, and it's fine. No problem, or make a motion that the request be honored.
So I don't know.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on it? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, number C. Jim, that was for the changes...
To the zoning resolution.
To the zoning resolution.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
That's the putt.
Yes, sir.
That's the putt, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you got a motion by Commissioner Waller, seconded by Commissioner Shaver. Any further discussion? All those... Do you have any, Bill?
No.
Okay, any, okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, number D.
That's mine and Commissioner Duff. I'll make a motion. We approve the road closure.
I second that.
No, sorry.
Okay, we got a motion and a second.
Can they still ride bikes on that road?
It's not even a road, man. It's a hay field.
Okay.
Same on the old zone, the old zone and all, yeah.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. You just gotta vote your time here, don't you? We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That road is closed. E.
That was just the, that was just the changes that were proposed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
You can go home, Jim.
Thank you all.
Okay.
Stay traveled. Maybe introductions of our planner, buddy. How, what do you think about that since he's here?
Hi, Gary.
Can you introduce him?
I don't know if y'all have met him. Mr. Greg Monthoof, he's our new planner. He's been working, learning some of the ropes and hopefully gets some new things going up we need to take care of in the...
And he's dragging to our exciting meetings, right?
And, and hopefully, one day.
Next, next month.
Have a good evening.
Yeah.
Okay, the Honorable Mayor, Buddy Bradshaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Everybody has a copy of the Commission Workshop, meeting dates and holidays. Here's the stuff I could find. Here we go. So they are what they are.
Make a recommendation for the approval of both A and B.
Okay, we got both of them once?
Yes, sir. And I think everyone does need to be aware that Mr. Heilman and you are twin brothers, I do believe.
I always heard he was your oldest son.
Move forward, Mr. President.
I'll second the motion.
We got a motion and a second. Who seconded? Thank you, Matt.
Mr. Chairman, I want to point out one thing right real quick. At the workshop, I raised a concern about these odd holidays we have that don't really follow holiday. The reason I raise that is not because they do. Holidays cost money. I don't know what it is now. It used to be about $20,000 a holiday it costs the county. That's why when I asked, you know, why are we having a holiday when it's three days after an actual holiday? Every time we had one, it cost $20,000, $25,000. That's my concern. I wouldn't care about the thing. That's why I raised the concern, so... I meant to say that at the workshop, I forgot.
All right.
They're expensive.
I don't think it matters, but it still says "Workshops" at county office building. I think we all discussed...
No, it's, it's coming to here. As long as COVID-19 is here, we're here.
I think forever.
Well, that's probably the way it'll go.
COVID, COVID will be over tomorrow night.
Okay.
It is tomorrow night.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Mears, seconded by Commissioner Tinker.
For A and B.
For A and B. Any further discussion?
I, I hate agreeing with Ann Shaver, but...
What?
It's a little weird to have the holiday on December 27th.
Well, look at the July one.
Yeah, that's July 5th instead of July 4th. I don't understand that either.
Government and private sector, it's a world difference.
Because I mean, the actual holiday, the bank, everything's gonna be closed, so...
Everything will be closed that day, too.
I assure you, my house is not closed December 27th.
Mine isn't either, and neither's my bank.
I don't know anything closed.
Isn't that like the federal holiday? If it falls on the weekend, you got it following Monday.
Are the cows off that day, Van?
They don't get a day off, neither do I.
Moving right along.
Moving right along.
Any further discussion?
Banks will be closed.
Okay, all in favor of both A and B, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, they pass. For those of you who don't know, Ed Heilman is a longtime village resident. The...
He's one of the good ones, though, isn't he?
He is. That's debatable.
The previous, the previous member from Tellico Village on the beer board passed away. That was Bob Snodgrass. He's been there a long time, so Ed is gonna replace him. The only negative I could tell you is he's a Georgia fan.
Ooh, well, that's why David suckles him up to him then.
Not as bad as Alabama.
And I'll tell you one other thing. You'll probably get mad at me, and I'll catch hell when it's done. He's a former Marine, and he was an A-6 backseat driver. So Ed, welcome to the beer board.
He's not met Fuzz yet, has he?
Mr. Chairman, official, Doug, one more time. The Tracy's office, particularly Amy Langley, there was another grant that came out with COVID, COVID reimbursement grant. Is that right, Tracy?
That's correct.
Amy Langley did a incredible job getting that together, and we've already got it, right?
We did.
We have a check of just shy of $800,000 in addition to the one...
On the top of the other one?
Yes.
Is it designated?
Nope.
It's reimbursed. Some of the things, it's been like the whole process. It's this rule, then tomorrow it's this rule, then it's this rule, then it's this rule, and they're going back, no, it's this way again. So it was reimbursement. A lot of it was salaries for central employees during, I think most of it was shared department, if not all. And so we started plugging those in. It's $800,000 cap. We got to $796.99. And Amy still says that other penny's there, so we're gonna spew it to make it nice and round. We got additional, like I said, almost $800,000 for State of Tennessee on top of our...
So it came from the state.
And it goes into the general fund, correct?
It's just salaries?
Reimbursements.
Yeah, just...
Rem, it's already paying back for what we've already paid out.
Mayor, will that come up to Budget Committee in two weeks?
It will.
Revenue stream, the revenue stream will.
It will.
Been a member.
Okay.
That's all. Thank you all.
That's good news.
Absolutely. Maybe they got another pocket. We even applying for 80 more?
We will apply for about 80 more thousand. If there are extra funds, it may be considered.
Not guaranteed.
Did you say eight?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Hearing aids included in that.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Susan Husky, come to the podium and tell us about the...
I'm making motion. We approve these two.
I'll second that motion. Save her a trip.
Well, we'll save you the trip.
We heard it at the workshop.
For Ms. Husky's to request?
We've got a motion and a second to approve the lease agreement for the Circuit Court posted machine and a multi-year copier contract for Loudoun Library. Any further discussion? There's money in this. Call the roll.
Mears.
Aye.
Hurley.
Aye.
Tinker.
Aye.
Sutterfield.
Aye.
Whitfield.
Aye.
Cullen.
Aye.
Doug.
Aye.
Shaver.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Okay, next up is...
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve the two bonds for the two elected officials.
Second. Please, Ms. Brewster.
Thank you, Ms. Row.
Did I miss out on the contest tonight?
You didn't have a point when you mentioned that, man. I gotta get ready for the election.
There's only one thing on one of those bonds. Mike Campbell sent an email today. And in the paperwork, Tammy, it shows his county of residence as blunt. It's a typo. That's the only thing that needs to be corrected on that.
Hi, Ms. Husky. Have a good evening.
We can correct it?
He does live almost like this.
As close as you can get, buddy.
Okay.
If he stepped out in the water, he'd be in blood.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve 1 and 2, the statutory bonds for these two officials. Any further discussion? Tammy, call the roll. There's money involved.
Hurley.
Aye.
Tinker.
Aye.
Sutterfield.
Aye.
Whitfield.
Aye.
Cullen.
Aye.
Doug.
Aye.
Shaver.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Mears.
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I ask a question of Ms. Blair. Has there been anything changed since the workshop on any of these amendments?
No, nothing has changed, but you did receive updated spreadsheets in your packets for the county general fund.
Got it.
Budget Committee originally considered $40,000 for sheriff's department vehicles, but that was changed to $30,000. So you see the correction on that. $12,000 was added to Fund 116 for two compacters. That was not in your original worksheets. You received a correction. Also, Capitol Projects Committee made a recommendation for $12,000 more for the Luttrell Community Center. That wasn't prepared upfront, so you received that. All of those are recommended by the Budget Committee, along with everything else on the list.
I'll make a motion. We approve all the budget amendments.
Second.
Okay.[1768.82] Okay. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Brewster to approve the budget recommendations one through eight.
Now the sheriff's budget, that was instead of two, one car? One car.
Thirty thousand instead of forty.
Yeah, thirty thousand instead of forty, however they decide to buy two years or one new.
So we went from cars just to an amount of money.
You and I voted no.
We voted no, so it is a moot, you know?
Yeah.
All the other cars are in Cabinet Project. For two years.
This was overlooked, apparently.
For two years.
Are we gonna vote on it separately?
If you wanna pull it out, pull it out.
He's gotta pull it out.
We voted for it, went through, the big one, I have to vote no.
I know, many of you don't, too, but I'm not for, anyhow, whatever.
Which ones it in?
County general fund.
Okay. Make, make a motion for all the others, but 115, right now.
No, it won't fit in there.
Just leave it alone.
Okay.
Moving on.
Maybe not.
All right, there's money involved, call the roll.
Tinker?
Because I'm an employee of the Board of Education, I have a conflict of interest in proposal to be voted. However, I declare that my argument in my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents. And those are our general purpose school fund, cafeteria fund. And I say aye.
Sutterfield?
I vote aye on all of them except the county general fund.
I don't think it works that way.
It doesn't.
Get their left.
You can abstain.
No.
Okay.
Whitfield?
Aye.
Cullen?
Aye.
Duff?
Aye.
Shaver?
Aye.
Waller?
Aye.
Brewster?
You've turned, Co.
Aye.
Hurley?
I know that hurt you to say aye, didn't it?
It did.
I know.
Mr. Cullen, I also requested the records reflect that September minutes of the budget committee meeting, as well as the summer financial technical October was distributed to commission prior to the meeting. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Tracy. Commissioner Mears?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, reading the names, needing a second after the last name is read. Cindy Ochi, Whitney Carter, Caldwell, Andrea Cohen, Mary Lou King, Margaret Lawson, Tracy Layman, Kimberly Lovelace, Janie McCullough, Vicki Miller, Michael Moody, Beverly Ross, Michelle Sprouse, Dakota Tony, and Teresa Wood, needing a second.
That was like the most normal list of names we've had.